It's now six thirty. I'd like to call this April twenty seventh, two thousand twenty-three, City of Menneson Council meeting to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Orchikowski.
Here.
Councilperson Thomas.
Here.
Councilman Nestor.
Present.
Councilman Gregor.
Here.
Mayor Mojer.
Present.
Mayor in notice.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask our Pastor Tim Bergen to lead Pastor of the Christian Center Church of Bel Vernon, please, in prayer.
If you would feel free to join me in prayer, please. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the wisdom represented by this mayor and this council. And Father, we ask that you pour out more wisdom, more grace, more mercy. Father, I thank you that that this city is growing and becoming more of what you want it to be every day. And Father, I pray with every person that has walked through these doors with a question, with a problem, with a complaint, with with a query of some kind, Father, I pray that they get their answer today. I pray that they get the response that they're looking for that will move the city forward and bless them as well. Father, we welcome your presence into this place. We welcome you to have your way. And Lord, we ask that everything be done in order to glorify you, that every word spoken would be a blessing, every attitude would be an honor. And Lord, that you would have your way. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a few things that will be changed on the agenda. These were last-minute corrections that were found. First off, under my agenda items, number K will be a motion to approve the final payment of of the contract between Shane Feister and the City of Menneson for the completion of the mural at Anthony E. Madison Senior Veterans Memorial Park, two thousand twenty-three project in the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars. Also, under the agenda of items for Councilman Ordchowski, there's some corrections in the amounts. This is items, we're adding items G, H, I, and J. G will be to pay, a motion to pay the following invoices for the Parks Department in the amount of eight hundred and thirty-six dollars. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment E. Number H will be motion to pay the following invoices from the grant fund in the amount of two thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-four cents. All invoices are attached to this, this agenda's attachment F. I will be a motion to pay the following invoices from the recreational fund in the amount of two hundred and fifty-six dollars and seven cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment G. And finally, J will be a motion to pay the following invoice from the line usage fund in the amount of seven thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars. All invoices are attached to this agenda's attachment H. At this time, I would like for...
Motion of the second.
Oh, I need a motion to to accept those changes?
Mayor motion to accept tonight's changes to the agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions?
Question, ma'am.
I have a question. I don't know if this is reading right because we pay half the seventy-five at the beginning and half at the completion. So do we need to reword that or no?
So it would not be final payment at this point?
No, because they haven't received this. They, when they start, they receive seventy-five and then they receive the other seventy-five at the end when they're finished paying. Well, they've finished the whole walk, yes. Not the original one. That was only five. But to do the two, the other remainder of the walk, it's going to be fifteen.
So he's been paid seventy-five hundred dollars?
No, he hasn't paid anything yet.
How about change the word final to initial payment?
So this will become a motion to approve the initial payment of the contract between Shane Feister and the City of Menneson for the completion of the mural at Anthony E. Madison Senior Veterans Memorial Park, two thousand twenty-three project in the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars. It's the first of two.
And we're not going to leave and then at the completion.
We'll have another motion for the final seventy-five hundred. Okay. Call roll, please.
Councilman Orchikowski.
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Mayor Mojer.
Yes.
And Mayor. You have a spare pen down there, may I use it? Never mind. Gorbosh, I'll take this one. Thank you.
At this time, I'd ask council to review the pre, minutes of the previous April thirteenth session and to make a motion to accept the the minutes when ready. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to look at them.
No.
Okay, right, ma'am. I made motion.
Mayor motion to approve previous seasons, sessions met minutes from April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Orchikowski.
Yes.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Mayor Mojer.
Yes. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment on agenda items only.
Municipal Fire Chief Delmore, Apple Eighteen Twenty-One Service Lane. About a year ago...
Where you got that other mic wrong?
Is this a agenda item?
About a year ago, I started a journey with figuring out how to buy radios for my firemen because a year ago, it was a a problem. A year later, it's catastrophe. Okay, it hasn't gotten any better. It's gotten worse. I guess it was April of last year, right about this date last year, maybe to the date. I stood here and spoke to the people in the public, mayor, council, and tried to hammer across a point of the danger that my firefighters are in. It hasn't gotten any better. I received one allotment of radios and I thanked all of you for that. I came to two CDBG meetings where nobody else came to. Nobody sat in these seats and wanted money for anything. I showed up because I thought that it was very important that we take care of the need in front of us. Okay? So by talking to Walt Haglin, who does what? Ron, what is his function here?
He's the coordinator for CDBG.
Okay. Because I didn't want to make a mistake, all right? I didn't want nothing to go wrong. Ts, Is, everything ready to go. Where did we go wrong? Where are we at with this? Am I going to wait another four months to correct this?
I thought he took care of all that. He's supposed to have taken care of all that.
Nothing is taken care of, as far as I know.
Well, if you...
We're still, we're, we are still accepting bids as we speak.
He's supposed, he's supposed to have submitted it to the CDBG.
It's, yeah.
It's submitted.
It's, and that's what I thought, that it was submitted.
But we had to do a procedure with two advertisements.
So what I did, so that the public knows, I went out and looked into the prices of radios. And the best there could be, we were always as firefighters, the best there could be Motorola, been working with them for a hundred years, eighty-some thousand dollars. I go out and get a bid from Kenwood, which I've been using a radio now for most of the year, best radio I've ever owned, in my opinion. So, uh, fifty-three thou, or fifty thousand even. They actually come down two thousand in a bid to keep me under fifty thousand. What we need to do is after this evening, but you're still accepting bids, so...
Yeah, apparently it had a bid, bid twice and there's another, the final bid opening is when?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday, okay.
After that happens, after next Thursday, there's only one sealed bid, correct, as we stand here?
I don't know.
At the moment, yes.
At the moment, one seal. Where are we at? How long is this going to be before I can have these radios in my possession?
The radios.
I went out and, I ran out and got two bids, exactly what the CDBG guy told me to do. Got two bids. They've been in someone's possession now for months, two bids. The lowest one is thirty-five thousand under the other one. To find out that something was done wrong. What was done wrong? Who did it wrong?
Could I, yeah, could I, yeah. Joe, could you tell us what we had done wrong?
When you talked to Mr. Haglin, the city did have those bids.
Right.
But there was never an advertisement placed because the city just got the advertisement from him. That was the issue.
So, so Walt messed it up?
There was a miscommunication for sure. I don't know where it was, but the advertisement has to be...
Well, the advert...
So my question this evening is, after next Thursday.
Yeah.
How long is it going to be before I can know that I could talk to those two gentlemen back there? Jason there has a newborn. I got to make sure he gets home.
I can't, I can't say how long it's going to take to to deliver the...
It's the money being drawn down.
The money should be able to be drawn down the following Thursday, is that correct? So...
I'll check tomorrow, Dove, and give you that answer.
I'm going to come back here in July, August, September.
No, listen to me.
I don't think.
We're talking about the Thursday after next.
Right.
The next meeting.
We're all in the same...
In the May eleventh meeting you approve it.
The May eleventh meeting will approve it.
I feel much better. All right, listen. You know I'm a passionate person about this, okay? I have a lot on my plate to make sure these people get home to their families, you know? And it's hard to do if I can't communicate with them. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. We're going to be expedite after next Thursday, right? We're going to be able to do this?
Not next Thursday. It'll be...
May eleventh.
May eleventh.
May eleventh.
We'll vote on it.
It'll be approved, but expedited in that period, yeah.
Very good. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Excellent, thank you. People came here last year to discuss, why did it almost take a whole year to find out there was a mistake?
That wasn't, no, that wasn't... The hearings were, were last year, right? It's a process for CDBG. This money only becomes available after the city goes through the process, the state goes through its process. There are seats up here, too. I'm sorry. It's a big room.
Then move.
Can you please show some decorum up here for once? For once, for once!
Hey, Joe, let it go.
CDBG, i- it's a process, right? It does take time. Um, the money just became available...
In March.
Yeah. Yes, that's correct.
Yes.
It's always a year behind.
Yep, yes.
Always a year behind. Well, they didn't run the second ad. They ran one ad. They didn't run the second ad. Yeah, it was a mistake. Unfortunately, we're all humans, even Mike. I have.
I thought we did through, through Dawn, yeah, that you talked to him.
I, I have talked. Okay, well, let's, let's continue on.
Okay. This is Ernie Telegraphers, twenty-nine Rex. I have two questions here. One, the liquid fuel budget. What's that supposed to be used for, Tony? Because you got more than one invoice here, so it's going two different places.
Why have two different things? Because one of them is actually bills that come out of liquid fuels, which is for West Penn Power, which is about the streetlights, okay? The other one is to reimburse this, the general fund from the liquid fuels fund. And one was nineteen thousand nine hundred and some dollars and the other one was seven, was two for four thousand some dollars each. And the reason being was, at the time when the bills came due, April first, the nineteen thousand was KS Bank for the big boom truck for the John Deere. Liquid fuels money hadn't come in yet and the bill was due. So we paid the bill instead of being late.
Then you took it out.
And we're reimbursing it back. And the other ones were the same thing. There was less than two thousand dollars in liquid fuels. So liquid fuels owed the general fund seven thousand or eight thousand dollars and that's the reason for the two.
Okay.
So there's bills, then it was reimbursed. Does that make sense?
Yeah, now it does. Um, you got to break this down. F, what does that mean? It sounds very legal here, but I don't, I don't know what the CBG grants and...
Well, I'll try to explain that at that time. That's going to be news for a lot of people.
Okay, just make sure you clear it up.
I will.
Thanks.
Okay, does anybody have any correspondence that they need to declare? At this time, I'd like to ask our solicitor to give his, his report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Um, let me address Mr. Telegraph's question first with regards to the CDBG mortgages. The mayor will talk a little bit about this later on. Um, the city has had a program probably from the mid-eighties to the early two thousands, some breaks in between, where they granted mortgages using CDBG funds for home improvement. Um, there were two sets. There were actual mortgages, um, that operate like a mortgage that you would get from your bank. The other set were home improvement grants. Um, with those grants, there was a five-year period that would be forgiven as long as your house was occupied and it was up to code. A lot of these mortgages, they have expired. Uh, the statute of limitations has run on them, meaning the city can't collect. But there are a number, the mayor looked at a sample of those mortgages, there are a number that that money is still due and owed to the city. The mayor's taking a look at all those and I helped him take a look at the initial ones and just trying to figure out how big the scope of this is. That's going to be step two of the process. Um, the mayor's already talked to Mr. Haglin to see what could, what you could utilize that money for. Part of the problem is this was through, we believe, a state program that no longer exists. Um, the initial analysis is that any money that does come back into the city is going to be used for CDBG purposes. We'll let the mayor explain his research a little more in a few moments. Um, the second item is there are fourteen properties scheduled for demolition hearings. Um, this is part of the county ARPA COVID money project. They'll be held, uh, May twenty-fifth at five-thirty. Reason it's five-thirty, there's fourteen of them. Initially, it was twenty-two that code enforcement has identified. But Marvin was able to get, I believe, eight of them signed off on for approval from owners. So that's where that stands. Again, it's May twenty-fifth at five-thirty. Um, that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, I'd like to ask, well, we don't have our city treasurer here, so we'll postpone that one.
But he did his report the last meeting.
Okay. Um, at this time, ask our city controller to give her report.
Thank you, Mayor. The Charlotte Federal Savings General Fund Bank Checking Account reconciliation as of March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Beginning bank balance as of February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three was three hundred and ninety thousand, thirty-nine dollars and seven cents. Deposits made were four hundred and eighty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and three cents. Expenses, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and two dollars and ninety-seven cents. The ending balance as of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three was five hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirteen cents. Outstanding checks, sixty thousand, fifteen dollars and eighty-five cents. Reconciled balance to the bank statement was four hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. That's my report.
Thank you. Allow our city treasurer to get seated. Do you have a report for council?
I have a miscellaneous report, Mayor. One of our citizens last, couple of weeks ago, asked about the possible getting a quarterly return. And I just was jotting down some numbers today. And I got a ballpark figure, if you want me to read it.
Feel free, your, your call.
This is going to be from, uh, January first through March thirty-first, I believe, it's three. Year-to-date, current fees on the garbage, we received three hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. Budget amount was three hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Right now, we're below the budget, four thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Delinquent garbage fees collected for the quarter, twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents. The budget amount for the year is eighty thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. We're down in that department, fifty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-six cents. Interest collected by Portnoy, year-to-date, was two thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-five cents. The budget amount was two thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars. We're over eighteen dollars and sixty-five cents in that account. Garbage fees collected for two thousand twenty-four was seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. Budget amount is one thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars. We're down six hundred and thirty dollars. City real estate taxes, revenues, current year-to-date, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars and five cents. Budget amount is two million, thirteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars. We're down one million, six hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars and ninety-five cents. Now, this month, we had up till the end of April for the, uh, garbage fees to be paid with the two percent discount. One of the biggest factors in that is the people that are outstanding with mortgages on their loan. The mortgage companies usually wait till the last minute to pay that amount. So you're going to see a big increase in that, probably in my next month's, uh, reading. Delinquent city taxes, year-to-date, eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty cents. Budget amount, five thousand, five hundred and three dollars. We're over three thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars and thirty cents we collected. Did well on our collections for the delinquencies from the city. Now, the Westmoreland County, year-to-date, sixty-four thousand, six hundred and seven dollars and thirty-nine cents. Budget amount, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars. We're down one hundred and two thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-one cents here, uh, for the budget amount for year-to-date. And I'm sure that's figures, both those figures will increase. Now, these next amounts are different departments, but we really don't know what is going to come into these departments. We can only go by the past years, what we've received. Real estate transfer tax, year-to-date, twenty thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty-seven cents. Budget amount was eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. We're down sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirteen cents. Earned income tax, one hundred and six, seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. Budget for two thousand twenty-three, five hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars. We're down three hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and three cents. Mercantile tax, year-to-date, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty cents. Budget amount, twenty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars. We're down twenty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty cents. Local service tax, year-to-date, nineteen thousand, three dollars and eight cents. Budget amount, fifty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. We're down thirty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety-two cents. Tax certifications, year-to-date, six thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. Budget amount, twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. We're down fifteen thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. Immiss-pleading letters, year-to-date, four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Budget amount, fourteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. We're down nine thousand, nine hundred dollars in that party. That concludes my report for this month on that quarterly recharge.
Thank you. Well, let's get down to new business. Uh, first off, I'm very pleased to have with us today, um, Gordon Mann. He's with the Housing and Urban Development, specifically the Distressed Municipalities Technical Assistance Group. He's one of the, uh, the two teams that were assigned to us. He's with the PFM Financial. He's PFM Financial Advisors. Uh, he was here before, along with V N. He's here today to talk a little bit about his report that he put together that I passed out to everybody the last meeting. If you would, please welcome him at this time.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. Oh, my pleasure. Thank you for having me. I'll, I'll try to speak into the mic, although I've been gifted with a naturally loud voice, so I don't know how, how much you'll need that. Uh, tonight, I wanted to spend a few minutes introducing myself and the program, explaining what we think would be helpful and, uh, talking a little bit about how we'll go about doing that. Uh, we're just at the start of our effort. Sent a, uh, information request to the mayor who sent us some good financial numbers back. Uh, if you're looking for answers on how to fix things, I don't have them yet. But we, uh, we do appreciate the opportunity to be here. Uh, so as the mayor said, uh, the city applied for a program called the Distress Cities Technical Assistance Program that is run out of HUD. I am not from the federal government, so I can't say I'm from the federal government. I'm here to help. I'm from Philadelphia. I'm from the eastern side of the state. Uh, I've worked all over Pennsylvania, worked in Pittsburgh for ten years. I've been working in Newcastle, if you know where that is, for sixteen years, Redding for seventeen years, Beaver County, so I've, I've been around a number of places. I think this is my first time working in Westmoreland County, although I did meet with the county commissioners quite a while ago, probably a different set of commissioners than what it is now. So we've been brought in. The mayor had applied for help with blight to get properties cleaned up, to make them safer, to make them more attractive, to make them less of a fire hazard, uh, to make them less of a place where they're a magnet for crime. And two companies or two entities were assigned to help the city. One was Lisk, which I think is the local initiative services corporation or something like that. Obviously, I'm not from them because I don't know what their name stands for. Uh, but they are the one that would be focused on community and economic development. And I'm from Public Financial Management, PFM, which is not a very creative title, but it does describe who we are. So we are about managing finances and managing money and trying to get the most out of that money in accomplishment of something else. Obviously, if you have a giant deficit, if you run out of money, there's not much you can do. But the, the end goal for city government is not to build up the biggest bank account it can. It's not a, it's not a private entity. So how did you apply for blight remediation and end up with a beep counter? How did you end up with somebody from Public Financial Management? I didn't have to be here very long. It's Ernie, right? Ernie already had it figured out. When I said that I was here, uh, to work on blight remediation, he said, where's the money coming from, right? So that is, that is in essence why I'm here. I am here to try and figure out where the sources of money are, what the options are to direct money, uh, to remediate blight. And I'll talk a little bit about what that means in a second. The connection between finances and money, or between finances and blight on one side is pretty simple, right? You need money to do demolition. You need money to pave roads. You need money to invest in your parks. Uh, that connection is pretty simple. What's not as clear, but absolutely as true, is the connection the other way. If the city is not able to address blight, the situation with the tax and the finances get worse and worse. Pennsylvania as a state creates a financial system where you are rewarded for residents. If you drive whatever it is, forty-five minutes or whatever it is, to Ohio, you tax people based on where they work. So the person who drives into Youngstown, works there and goes home, Youngstown keeps that money. Here in Pennsylvania, it works the other way around. You're rewarded for where people live. So if somebody drives into Menneson and works and then drives home, they take their money with them. They take their income tax with them. They pay their real estate taxes out there. They pay their trash fees out there. So what that means is if you, uh, if you're looking at, if I had a business who was going to rent and bring ten employees in... So what that means is, if you, if you're looking at, if I had a business who was going to rent and bring 10 employees in or a, somebody who was going to rent out 10 houses, the latter is the one that actually helps the city more. Because the renters pay income tax and they pay trash fees. And I made it rent, so I took the real estate taxes out of it. If a business comes in and rents, you get 52 bucks a year. And you probably split it with the school district. And that's it. Because that's the way Pennsylvania's tax structure works. You tax people based on where they live, not based on where they work. So why does that matter? If you have a community where there's a lot of blight, where it's a place where people don't feel safe or they don't feel that it's attractive, where the parks aren't good, where the roads aren't good, they won't live there. They'll move and they'll take their tax dollars with them. And when they take their tax dollars with them, it makes it harder to clean the city up, which makes it easier for people to leave, which makes it harder to clean the city up. And you can see you get into this cycle. So the tricky thing is, how do we reverse it? Because the reverse is also true, right? We make the city cleaner and attract people in. That brings tax money in, which makes it easier to make the city cleaner, which makes it easy to figure out, you can see where it goes from there. The challenge that we have is to try and figure out how to reverse that thing. I want to be honest about a couple of things. I talked with the fire chief the last time I was here. And I said, "I imagine you've had some of these engagements before," right? The city did an early intervention plan with the state. Feds may have been here before. And I asked him how helpful they've been. And he gave a pretty diplomatic answer, but I think the real answer was probably not real helpful. So I want to be honest about a couple of things here. I don't come with any magic bullets or secret answers. I've worked all over the state and there isn't one, right? There isn't some magic thing that I'm going to bring you from Philly or Washington or Pittsburgh or anywhere else that's going to turn things around, right? I don't know if that's good news or bad news, but I just want to be entirely honest with you upfront. What I also believe to be true and know to be true from doing this for almost two decades is good information leads to better decisions. So part of what we are here to do is to build on the progress that the councilmen and council have made in getting your cash flow situation stabilized and to give you, and since you guys are so active and involved in this process, you better information to make better decisions. The last thing I would say is, while there are no magic bullets and I will not come up with a magic plan to fix things, I have never worked any place, regardless of any, whatever their financial condition is, regardless of how good or bad their blighted situation is, where the decisions that happen in this room don't make a difference. The decisions that happen here, this body can make a positive difference or it could make the opposite. It could make a negative difference. But while I don't, I'm not going to come up with a plan to fix all blight, to save all parks, and that's not what the federal government has brought us in to do, we will hopefully give you better information and a plan so that you can make the decisions. So it will make a difference, so we can see that cycle reverse. Let me talk a little bit specifically about what we're going to do. And then I'll pause and folks can ask questions or whatever. So a couple of things. Again, LISC is the entity that's going to, that will come in and give the city advice on two things. What do you do with a vacant lot once it's vacant, right? Ugly building comes down, now what, right? Now it's weeds, now it's something else. Maybe it's not a fire hazard anymore, but obviously you didn't knock it down so that you could have a track of weeds and trash there. So LISC will come in and talk about how to reuse the properties once it's vacant. The second thing is, you don't have to knock everything down, right? The LISC will come in and talk about rehabilitating sites and trying to find the difference between whether, where do I draw that line? How do I make the decision between, yes, I should save it and try to rehabilitate it? No, it's actually better to just wipe it out and start different. That would be LISC's specialty. Ours is to come in and help tie in the money in a couple of ways. You could think about finances three ways, right? You can think about it in the life cycle you have. You have to pay your bills today, right? You all, you'll get electric bills, energy bills, and that's what we call the finance cash flow. So when the treasurer gives his report or the councilman gives his report, how much cash do you have? Do you have enough cash on hand to pay your bills when they come due in whatever account they got to come from and then do the reimbursement? That's the very, that's the most basic thing. If you don't have cash, which is where you were, I think, when the mayor started and took office, you can't pay your employees and it's game over, right? The next of the things I'm going to talk about don't matter. So cash flow is number one. So our plan is to come up, because councilman has, I hope this isn't breaking news, but has said he's not going to work here forever, right? So our goal is to come up with a tool that actually helps the city manage the cash flow so he can retire or go do something else and builds on his knowledge but gives all of you a chance to see, okay, putting those numbers in context. Because while it's great that the trash fees brought in $200,052 or whatever it is, what does that, what does that mean? How does that compare? The treasurer gave you a sense of the budget, but how does it compare to last year? How much should we have at this time? How much do, money do we need to have? Are we really ahead or behind so that we can, we know whether we can pay our bills, put some money aside, do whatever it is? So cash flow is number one. The second thing, you have to pay your bills on a daily basis. You have to pay, you have to be able to make sure you can get through the full year, right? Pay your mortgage, if you've got loans, credit cards, whatever it is. That's in essence what the budget is. It's taking the money that you bring in on a current year basis for the full 12 months and paying your expenses. So what we're going to do is take the budget and run it out three years, okay? What are your staff's expenses? What are your real estate tax revenues? What are your earned income taxes? I don't have, I don't have a crystal ball. I can't predict those things with accuracy, but having done these things or with absolute accuracy, but having done this for 17 years, we got a pretty good sense of how things will change and will work based off of the information you have. Why would you do that? What's that going to show? Spoiler alert, it's going to show a deficit, right? It does everywhere I work in Pennsylvania. It will here too. It will show you needing more things than you have money to pay for. Big surprise. So why do we do it? Because we need to know what that gap is. We need to know what the deficit is. We need to know how it changes. Does it grow? Does it actually shrink? Because that will give us the information we need to start making decisions. Again, remember guiding principle, better decisions lead, better information leads to better decisions. The next thing is, the last time we were here, we met with most of the council members. I think I missed you, but we met with most of the council members. We met with both chiefs. We met with Rodney. We met with a bunch of different people. And we heard lots of different, really good goals, ranging from, "I'd like to build reserves." "I'd like to reduce taxes." "I'd like to invest more in streets." "I'd like to invest more in parks." "There's a loan we need to pay back to the line usage, the sewer fee." You can't do all of that. Again, spoiler alert. But if you make, if we give you the framework to make the decisions and then we prioritize in terms of, okay, which of these things do I want most? What are my options for paying for them? What do they cost? Because all of those things I just mentioned, they don't all cost the same amount of money, right? Some of them are more expensive, some of them are cheaper. And then I don't come with a preconceived notion of what you ought to do. My goal and my role is to facilitate the discussions between all of you so that you can decide what your priorities are. Because if you pull in five or six or seven different directions, you'll go nowhere. You have to pick your spots. You have to set priorities to be able to move things in a direction. And then the last thing, the one priority pretty much everyone agreed on when we were here, and it's not a surprise and we drove around, so we get it, is road improvements, right? You don't need a, somebody to come in with a suit and tie and tell you that you need to do more paving roads. Our goal is to try and figure out the money part of that and to lean fairly heavily on the staff you already have here in terms of staffing material. When do you do cold patch? When do you do hot patch? When do you do these different things? To try and put together a plan so that when you guys come in and say, "Hey, what's the plan for road construction? What's the plan for road paving? When and what and how much?" There's a plan. It will change. Gas prices change. Supply prices change. Staff come and go. But if you have a plan to base, to work with, the hope is that that gives you a framework to start to answer those questions over the next however many years we're able to take it through. So those, again, are the, are the three or four things we're focused on. Cash flow, budget, goal-setting, and coming up with a more concrete plan, no pun intended, to figure out how to pave the roads. I will pause and take questions from whoever has it. Ernie, you're the only one whose name I know down there.
Are you going to charge the city for doing this?
Absolutely. No, we're covered by the federal government. It's, it's a 100% covered by the federal government. So there I can really say I'm here to help. So I am absolutely free to you. There you go. Chief, you're the only other person whose name I know. Hit both of them.
Because I do care a lot about this community. I did sit on both of the last two comprehensive plans.
Okay.
And I don't sugarcoat much. I've gotten better with age. And I spent $200,000 on one, $200,000 on another. In my eyes, we accomplish nothing. We're right back to square one. So we just threw the money out the pool. Really, that's my opinion. I'm going to stick by that. The second thing is, you started your speech tonight talking about blight.
Right.
Okay? An awful lot about, more about funding. Do you have a hand in any of the blights that are going on right now? That's all county money, correct?
Correct. Right.
Okay. So what is your role with blight?
So our, my role on the financial side is to say, okay, what are the resources available to you locally? Probably not county. There's not a lot of county funding out there.
Obviously, there's 10, 12 million of them.
Well, probably from someone else, though, not from county coffers itself.
It's the county art money.
Okay, so from the federal government, that's what ARPA is. It's federal stimulus money. What's out there through HUD? Again, the program that kind of brought us in. And then we're familiar with the state. Truthfully, not a whole lot there. The state has different programs for different things. But again, as I said at the onset, I don't want to, I don't want to sell you a bill of goods by telling you the state has tons of money for blight. My role is to come in and say, okay, look, this is what you have available now. Probably not very much. These are your options to make it more. Now it's your decision, right? You're going to have a priority decision here. You're going to have to decide how bad you want it. Let me put it in different terms. There's a cost to do it, right? It's not for free. It's not coming from me or from you or from the sky. There's a cost to do it. How bad do you want it?
Being the leader is easy, everyone would want to do it.
What's that?
Being the leader is easy, everyone would want it.
That's right. So our goal is to give you, is to, is to try and make the decisions concrete and clear so that you can say, "Yeah, you know what? This will cost me less in this area or more in another, but it's worth it." Or, "No, I'd rather spend it over here." Or, "No, I'd rather not spend it at all." That will be your decision. Your decision.
My problem I see with the blight that's taking place right now, and it's almost a sin, okay? We don't get much time to train in these houses. I went out and talked to a contractor who's allowing me to let my firemen train in these houses. We may only have 24 hours to do that.
When you say "train in the house," what does that mean?
To go in and do our own rescues, cut holes, stuff that we can't do on a normal day that we get our young guys ready for real life.
Okay.
Okay? I went into two homes on South 14th Street that you could have moved your luggage in.
Yeah.
Okay? What are we doing with that? I mean, do you play a role in that? Should we be looking into these? Once you take a building down, it's gone.
Right.
Your tax money is gone.
Right.
Okay? The house across the street, both porches are falling down. The whole building's falling down. The best-looking mill work I've ever seen in my entire life.
Yeah.
I went in these two homes and it was actually fabulous. How beautiful they were.
Right.
No blight in the yard, no blight in the house. There wasn't even garbage in the house.
Yeah.
Okay? Do you play a role in deciding how we can do this?
So the direct answer?
Once you take all the buildings down?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
What do we have here? Do you think your wallet's going to get bigger when you tear old houses down?
No, it doesn't.
I used to sit on Mon Valley Initiative. Where some people think that's good, some people think that's bad.
Yeah.
We took homes that were given to us and put first-time homeowners in.
It's a lot of work to do.
Are you personally talking to them about this?
So the direct answer, the direct answer to your question is, no, in terms of the actual, do you take it down or not? That's LISC, right? Second, the first organization who's more focused on when do you rehab, when do you knock it down, what do you do with it? You can think of me as the money guy, right? What I would come in is, in terms of, okay, wait, you want to knock it down. What's the source of money? How much does it cost? What else could you be using it for? Is there a different, is there a better, is there another property that you can't save that you should take down? Should you be using the money to do all in a concentrated area? Or should you be trying to pick off the places that are most dangerous? I money, LISC would be more on that stuff. I try and stay in my lane and there are a lot of things I know and a lot of things I don't. And I think some of the stuff you mentioned probably falls into the latter category.
Let me try to clarify a couple of points.
Sure.
First off, is some of the people understand, early last year, the commissioners had some money left over in their ARP fund for state, for the county ARP money coming from the federal government. They had $105 million when they started out. They, they did lots of different programs, housing, blah, blah, blah. And it got down to the end of it and they still had some money left over. And they allocated $10.4 million to removing blight county-wide. Now, they go to their solicitors and the solicitors told them, "The only way you can do this is if you do the blight removal in the economically depressed areas of the county." And they took the lowest possible rung of the US Census and said, "This is where you can do it." Turns out that Menneson has two of those zones within the city. And most of the, the zones are incorporating most of the blight in Menneson, but not all of it by any stretch of imagination. But realize this, it is county-run. County commissioners are the ones that are using their county art money to accomplish this. So they're not coming to us and saying, "Here's several million dollars, go have fun."
Okay.
They basically said, "There's 500," and I don't remember the exact number anymore. I used to have it atop my, at the end of my tongue. There's 500 and some odd properties in the county that they had gone through evaluating properties for the last several years and said, "There's 500 blighted properties county-wide." Menneson has over half those, 280 of the properties in Menneson. And in fact, that number's probably understated by about 100. But the bottom line is, they have been coming in with, they, they first off, put together a program where they call it Code Pro. Code Pro allows you to go to a home and document that home. You take pictures of it. You say the paint's in such a shape, the foundation's such a shape, the windows, the doors, all the different aspects of it. And from there, it is determined whether it's blighted or not. Now, the two on 14th Street were removed primarily because they were in the right area, but also because there was some other issues going on in that neighborhood with some, some gang activity that those properties just had to go. And that was at the decision of the neighbors in that neighborhood, by the way. They were the ones that asked that those properties be removed. So anyway, here we are.
Excuse me. Were they blighted properties or just properties?
They were, they were, they were vacant properties. They met the criteria for blight, but they, more than anything, these properties were known to, to be places where gangs and so forth were meeting.
Mr. Hepburn, are these the ones you're talking about?
I see no activity in these homes of any kind.
Well, I'm sorry you didn't see it, but there's plenty of property. They could have been rehabbed, but their problem was that they, they weren't. And bottom line, it wasn't my decision anyway. It was the decision of the residents on that street. Wait a second, let me, let me give you a rip. Yeah. So bottom line is, you want houses, and I'm going along different things here. The houses you want to do, we need, there is a bidder's list that's going out now. You need to get that from the county and you need to be able to go into those houses right now, long before the bids are even done. And I will work with, with them to see if we can get that to happen. But that's, that's, that's a minor issue as far as the blight is concerned. So bottom line is, all the blight is being removed. A good percentage of the blight will be removed. At least half of the blight that Menneson has will be removed courtesy of the county. That's a big number. That's almost a reset button on the city. So we have no say-so, very little say-so about which houses are done. They have to meet the criteria that the county established. They have to be in a proper area that the county does. The county is not insensitive to it in that they contact the local residents around the property to make sure that this is a piece of property that should be demolished as opposed to one that should be rehabilitated. But they're going through and doing that as fast as they possibly can. Now, in the past, not in the past, one of the first rules that you have with, with demoing property is you have to have control of that property. You can't just take somebody's piece, somebody's home and say, "It's a blighted house, I'm going to demolish that home." That's just not the way that you do. So you have to have control of that property. There's only so many ways you can get control. The owner of the property can give you control. And that happens from time to time. You can use the judicial system. If they're so far behind on back taxes, you can go to the judicial and they can actually take that house away from them. Now, that only works if the house is vacant and so forth. We've pretty much said, "We're not going to do that to anybody that's living in the house." And then last but not least, there's the Act Ninety stuff, I believe it's Act Ninety, that allows a city to notify the, um, take a condemned house. A house that's truly condemned, it, it is a nuisance to the neighborhood, we can notify the lien holders, we can hold public hearings, and we can go through a legal process that allows us to demolish that home that way. So, those, those are many things, different ways taking property, that we're getting rid of property. That's not all property, that is only the property that is in these two economic zones. And just so everybody understands, that Third Street corridor, where Crystal and Technology is, a business I used to have, that I gave to my, my son-in-law and daughter, is not in that zone, which means that that McGrewa building that's right there beside it is not in that zone. As one of the biggest pieces of blight we have in the city, is not in the zone that can be done by the county. Further, if you go up Rostraver Street, houses on the left are in the zone, houses on the right are not. We've got a developer that wants to develop Linden Park, and you have blighted houses right across the street. Well, there is other funds, like you point out, ways of, of getting money. One of the limited ways we have of doing that is through CDBG funds. And we're, we're removing some of, some of the homes using CDBG funds.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
You say you were here last, about a year ago, two years?
No, I was here in February.
In February, huh?
Yeah.
Since you were here in February, what did you find different right now? What if you were looking in February, and you were looking today?
Right, so when we were here in February, the way the program works is, the first thing we do is we get a bunch of stuff to read. Budgets, audits, reports, that sort of thing. Then we come to town and we talk to folks, and that's what we were here in February.
You say you talked to folks, who did you talk to?
Uh, well, most of the folks who were up here, uh, one, two, I think we missed you, but, three, four, five. Uh, we were on the tour, uh, on the following morning, we were here at, we, now, this wasn't a back and forth conversation, but we were here to listen to the, uh, to the folks, Ernie, I remember. Go ahead.
You were being taken to somewhere they wanted you to go to.
Okay.
Okay, not to where you needed to go.
Okay.
Okay, number one. Number two, he says a lot of things, but he carries out very little. So whenever he says he's gonna tear half of the homes down that they need to come down, he says that. Three months from now, you're gonna have twenty-three where he's gonna tell you the legal is holding, the legal department is holding in the back, this is holding in the back. He's always got in his head, he's full of bull, okay? That's the bottom line, so I think it needs to be, in my opinion, is where the people, where the fire department, the heads of the fire department, the chief of police, to where they know if there's crime or no crime in the area.
Yeah.
But don't listen to all what they gotta tell you, because a lot of them are just like BS. If we got three mayors in this town, three, ah. I went to one of the rehabilitation, the rehabilitation meeting, they last twenty minutes, he speaks for forty-five minutes out there. And nothing is done.
Well, I did meet your fire chief, that's how I knew his name. I did meet your police chief.
Because the usually, these regular people.
Okay, I understand your point.
Because they take you, they're real, where you do, and they want you to do it.
Understand, and I, I have.
And they'll never take you to an house that you just mentioned.
Okay.
Because you know what, because they're full of bull.
Can we hear what the chief Heppel has to say?
All I was gonna, all I was gonna add was that I appreciate what the, the county is doing, and they're bringing an awful lot of money here. I think we need, as residents, have a little better understanding of what exactly blight is. Who determines what blight is? And I think we need to just slow down, take one breath, because these houses that are coming down, if any dollar of mine that I ever recorded or whispered, when we were tearing them houses down on South Fourteenth, I need a refund. Because that was ridiculous.
Yes, it was.
And tore the two houses down, and two weeks later, you had a huge brawl on the corner of the street. It didn't help by taking the houses down. I understand what people say, we're gonna put a hundred thousand dollars in the Ninth Street Park, if the neighbors say we want to shut it down, are we gonna put a padlock on the gate?
Yeah, because they, they're basically, they can't even work.
I mean, Ninth Street Park looks beautiful, I have nothing against the money that's being put into it, but neighbors can't have that much house.
Exactly.
You know, I sat on that board with Long Valley District, I was proud that we were bringing first time homeowners into this town. Putting people in our school district, that's what a redevelopment plan is about, that's what, you've gotta do that. You can't just tear everything down. You're, you're right, you're, so. You, you've been in the game a long time, you should know to tell them. So.
They did it for three years. The first year they did it using Patch Management. The second year they did it with Patch Management. The third year they said, we want to buy the machine that you're using. They bought a machine from Patch Management. They buy their materials from Patch Management and they operate their machine themselves now, after two years of watching it being done. They're still happy with it. Pittsburgh actually did these same program and they were very happy with it, but the union was not. So they ended up having to decan the project in Pittsburgh. What we've been looking at, there's options to buy, lease. We could do a small project where they could see what's going on, or a large project, just bite the whole thing and go for and do it. But these are things that we just need to continue working through and talking about. The Civic Center is also always a big issue. We put a people counter at the Civic Center just to keep track of how many people's going in the Civic Center, whether it's being used or not. The week, April 2nd through the 8th, there was 253 people. Between the April the 9th and the 15th, there was 326 people. Between the 16th and the 22nd, there was 102. And last, and this week up till today, there's only been 44. But that's 725 people that have used the Civic Center over the course of the month. It is being used for something. It is a viable asset. It's something that we need to think about and continue to do something with. One of the things that I brought up last year was the need for the rec board asked basically to change the ordinance that defined them and change the way that they operated. It's something that we need to go back and think about as a council too, as we're continuing doing things. There's a TAN note that we received at the beginning of the year. And every time we get real estate taxes in, I get information from the treasurer. The treasurer tells me how much it is. By the language of the TAN note, by the language of the resolution, 30% of the revenue that we get in gets used to pay back the TAN note. So thus far, we've paid $203,632.32 towards that TAN note. $6,018 was interest and we've got it down to, I take that back, we've paid them thus far $302,386.19. We've got it down to $203,632.32.
Mayor, what was the deadline for that?
The end of the year. But the deadline is really when we quit getting our real estate taxes in. We've got to pay it off. That's what they really attached was the real estate One other thing that I did was, there is a, the police department obtained a grant in the neighborhood of $191,870. It's a very good grant. It provides for a lot of different things that the police department really needs. We got that all signed and executed and that's taken place this week. Also, just to keep everybody really excited, Cypher and Cypher is our auditing company that we use. They came in today. They will be continuing their audit and they will have our audit available for everybody to look at, hopefully by the end of next month. By the last meeting of next month, we'll have the audit.
Did they charge them $5,000 or did they go over there?
Excuse me?
Do they still charge in the city $5,000 or did they go over there?
This is an entirely different thing. That was, that's another amount.
How much is that?
I don't remember.
It's for the yearly audit.
It's required by state law that you have your, everything audited. Is Tom Hardy here?
No.
Tom Hardy made a, has prepared a blighted property strategic plan. He presented that to council about last month, early last month. I'm not going to push this without him here, but I was intending to have a motion to adopt the Mineson Blighted Property Strategic Plan developed by Palau Alto, by Tom Hardy at Palau Alto Consulting and was presented, was hopefully being, it has been presented to the council. Does council wish to pursue this or table it at this time?
Table it.
Could I have a motion to table? Option B. Motion to adopt the Mineson Blighted Property Strategic Plan developed by Tom Hardy at Palau Alto Consulting and presented to council in the previous session.
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Ochakowski?
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes. At this time, I'd like to ask Sean Buffett to come in and give us a presentation about a loading zone that he's asking for in front of his new shop on Donner Avenue.
Sounds so sophisticated. Councilman Mayor, my name is Sean Buffett. I have the property down in 350 Donner Avenue and I'm requesting a loading zone in front of a building. I've got trailers on the left side and I've got storage in the back and I need to be able to get to it. And I'm continually getting blocked in by cars and with good reason, there's no loading zone there to block it off. I'm requesting to get the loading zone from the telephone pole between my property and the library to my new telephone pole in front of my building.
How many feet is that?
That is 60, about 75 feet of the 154 that I have.
So how many actual car spaces is that?
That I don't know because I don't know how many spaces are.
So about four or five remains. Now is that, are those spaces, would that be like like to four or something? Because you have like, you have the restaurant there, you have the library that, that have people. Yeah, so that would say, where would you?
Edmund, Edmund always has my approval. But I do work 24 hours. And so I get jammed up if there's cars parked. There's actually employees of the mill that park there for whatever reason. I guess they just want to be able to sneak out in the morning, so.
Just out of curiosity, could you use, with a smaller area work for you or does it have to be that big?
A lot of times when I'm pulling in with my truck, I've got equipment on there that's over 30 feet long. And you know what the state already is requiring. They would like more vision down the street for pulling off the lots, so.
So you want 75 feet of about 150 some feet?
Yes.
That's a lot of parking that you want?
Yes. I realize that. There is parking directly across the street, all the way up and down.
Just, sorry, just to remind you, Mayor, too, as a downtown resident, there's only one handicap parking tube in front of the library. And there's a lot of folks that go to that library that fight for a handicap parking spot.
There's not one in the?
There's just one in the front. There are a few in that parking lot, but that lot too is sometimes taking place by the coffee shop across the street. I'm just playing devil's advocate, but this is why I see downtown as I walk.
I'm just curious. I don't know if we can even make that decision without hearing from the people who actually have their businesses down there. We haven't heard from the library. We have to listen to the chazzies, you know, because they've been there, you know. And I think it's hard to just give up that space and not hear what they have to say about it.
Joe?
Yes, sir.
That's on a state road, correct?
That is on a state road.
Do we have jurisdiction over that?
That's a good question. I don't know off the top of my head.
I think you would need to look into that.
To ask the state first before making any decision.
I have a feeling they would have some say. I have a feeling if we wanted to add parking spaces, they would have some say.
If you're gonna, you're gonna remove parking spaces.
Yeah. It's worth a phone call to PennDOT, for sure.
I think we should check our legal.
We don't want to hinder your business as well. So we appreciate you coming into it. So we really do. Yeah, but I mean, but still, I mean, we just want to make sure that everything is fully looked over before we just start saying, you know what, we're going to give you this place and then yet.
Well, I understand. But if I'd have known I would have had this issue, I would have never put it there to begin with.
Yeah, it should have been in the planning pages. It should have been planned.
Do you have a driveway to go onto your property? Did you install a driveway?
That's in front of the garage door, yes.
Okay. Did you talk to PennDOT about installing that driveway?
Yes. And they actually wanted me to put in a permit to take all of the parking.
To the corner?
To the corner. And I actually moved my building down 15 feet to try and ease the issue with them. And that's why I got into the mess of why do I have a telephone pole in the driveway?
You've got a telephone pole right smack in the middle of that.
So I had Verizon move the telephone pole for me.
Are they taking that one out yet?
They, West Penn, it's a complicated thing, but West Penn has to start and they'll cut that portion of the pole down. Verizon has to take their wires off and.
So there's a plan to get rid of it?
Yeah. Tuesday, they're going to do the electrical and that pole will be gone. The new pole is planted and we'll be out of our way.
Okay. Well, I really appreciate you coming. We're probably going to have to look into this a little bit and understand a little bit more about what you require and what the say will allow us to do and PennDOT will allow us to do and so forth.
Make sure that everyone in this party is all comfortable, which is going to be very difficult to do, but it has to be met. Something has to be met.
I appreciate your consideration.
Lois, would you do me the honor of reading my motion D?
Motion to approve the second and final advertisement and request for sealed quotes and accompanying bid proposals for the City of Mineson for five station portable radios for the Mineson volunteer firefighters required under the funding guidelines of the Community Development Block Grant Program. The bids we open at City Hall on May 5th, 2023 and will be approved at the next meeting of the City of Mineson Council on May 11th, 2023. The request for proposal and advertisement is included with the meeting packets as Exhibit 1.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Ochakowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Yes.
Motion to approve the placement of a handicap parking placard and sign at a residence at 101205 Graham Avenue in the City of Mineson.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Ochakowski?
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes.
So I can go on to G, right?
Yes.
Motion to purchase and add an additional American AED defibrillator unit for utilization within the City Hall offices and structures at a cost addition to the current contract for a unit maintained at the Mineson Civic Center of an additional $79.99 per month for our unit at City Hall.
Second. Any questions?
Question, Mayor.
Yes.
Does this also cover the city garage and the library and any other sorts of property that's owned by the city?
Just, just at the City Hall. Right now, John, yes.
Just at this moment?
Yes.
Can always add more.
Yes.
Yes.
I would like to do so hopefully by the next meeting.
Okay. Where would you like them, John?
City Hall? No, at the library, of course, at the city garage. I mean, those gentlemen do a lot down there. God forbid if they had a heart attack, you know.
Chief of Police, do you need one of your station?
Do you have one in each? Good.
And I'm not too sure if the library has one either. So I'd like to see one at the library as well.
Is there a second to this motion?
Councilman Ochakowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Yes. We talked about DH as well.
I, motion to approve payment request number 15 to Penn Vest. Reynolds Brothers payment application number seven for work completed from March 1st, 2023 to March 31st, 2023, in the amount of $139,066.29. Voice invoice information referenced in the members' packet as Exhibit 3.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Ochakowski?
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes.
Motion to pay initial mobilization costs and miscellaneous expenses to mourn that construction in the amount of $18,000 for work completed at the Knight Street Park, Anthony E. Madison Facility under a CDBG contract approved by the City of Mineson.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Ochakowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Do you want me to read this one? Motion to approve the initial payment of the contract between Shane Feister and the City of Mineson for the completion of the mural at Anthony E. Madison Senior Veterans' Memorial Park, the 2023 project, in the amount of $7,500. And this clearly is half the payment, the first payment. Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Ochakowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
At this time, I'd like to ask Councilman Portniewski to give us his report.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the general fund in the amount of $54,052.38. All invoices are attached as attachment A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Ochakowski?
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes.
Motion to transfer the amount of $19,164 from the Parks. Motion to transfer the amount of $19,164 from the Parks Fund to the General Fund. The specifics of the transaction is to transfer this amount to the agenda as attachment B.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Ochakowski?
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the Liquid Fuels account in the amount of $4,734.76. All invoices are attached to the agenda as attachment C.
Is there a second? This is actually, I'll second. This is actually coming out of that account? Out of the Liquid Fuels, yes. Did we receive our Liquid Fuels money? What did we receive?
I will get you that done when I get it up here.
Now, Councilman Portniewski at this time is trying to locate.
I forgot to bring my paper that had my list, so I have to have to read it off my phone.
Well, you can, you can tell me later then.
Okay. Well, I'll tell everybody here when I get a chance.
But we got, we got the full amount in. Good.
We got 300, 200 some, 200, 300,000 dollars.
Close to 300.
Okay, call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Ochakowski?
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Motion to transfer the Liquid Fuels funds in the general fund account in the amount of $4,642.31. The specifics of this transaction are transferred, the amount of the general fund attached as attachment D.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
I have a question. According to the information I received, we paid $4,642.31 to reimburse to the general fund that was transferred from Liquid Fuels. We still owe the general fund $148,912.10. If we've received the money, why aren't we reimbursing the general fund?
We'll have to look into that.
Where is this hundred some thousand dollars coming from?
Wilson Home Heating for diesel fuel, $11,041.19. Compass Minerals Road Salt, $24,075.73. Barks for the plow truck repairs, $2,065.40. Traffic Control Repair Signals, $785. West Penn for traffic lights, $2,158.33. West Penn Power Street Lights, $110,918.41. Highway for road patch, $2,509.91. The total paid from the general fund was $153,554.41. That total is due from Liquid Fuels. As of today, we're reimbursing the general fund $4,642.31, which leaves a balance of $148,912.10 due to the general fund.
Okay. First of all, this $4,734 was what was reimbursed last month, okay? Where are those expenditures coming from? Because they're not coming from this year. There ain't no way in hell they're coming from this year. Where's those numbers coming from is what I want to know. Because I don't, never gotten those numbers. I don't have anything of a memo, an email or anything saying, oh, we still owe this, or somebody thinks we still owe this.
It's not that we owe it. It's that the line usage owes the general fund this money. No, this is, this is.
From Liquid Fuels.
Liquid Fuels. Or Liquid Fuels, not, not, excuse me, I keep getting. So this money is probably owed from last year or this year?
There's no way we have $100,000 from West Penn Power this year. So I want to know where those figures are coming from and how did somebody get figures that I have no clue that I have, I haven't even seen?
I will check into it further, but that was the information that I received when they saw that the reimbursement was $4,642.
So. Who was they? Who was they, if I ask?
From the accounts payable and the city clerk.
They should really provide that information to us so we know what we're looking at.
I have no knowledge of any of that. And some of those numbers sound as though they're running totals from last year. And last year, those bills would have been paid if they got paid, if the Liquid Fuels didn't have the money, got paid out of the general fund. Okay, that would have been last year. They wouldn't have got reimbursed again for this year because the books would have been closed until the end of the year.
I, I, I'm not sure about your logic on that. I think if the account was still owed, the money from the general, the general account was still owed. And if you didn't have the money last year, you get the money this year, you could still reimburse your general account.
They're eligible reimbursements at this point. I think council was unaware that these reimbursements were eligible too. The controller brought it up this evening. Obviously, there's some disconnect from accounts payable, treasury, city clerk to.
Well, there's, it's been a little jumbled. Yeah, they need to provide that information to us. Absolutely. Could you make a copy of that for everybody?
We have a motion.
We have a motion on the floor with a second. Is there any other more discussion items? Call the roll.
Councilman Ochakowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the transfer of $68,678.84 from the general fund to the payroll account to cover payroll expenses.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Ochakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Yes.
Motion to approve a transfer from the general account to the healthcare account in the amount of $4,200.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Ochakowski?
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the Parks Fund in the amount of $836. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment E.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Ochakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the Grant Fund in the amount of $2,499.94. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment F.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Ochakowski?
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the recreational fund in the amount of $256.07. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment G.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Ochakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the line usage fund in the amount of $7,875. All invoices are attached to the agenda as attachment H.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Ochakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Yes.
And now, you'll have to bear with me because I'm going to read these off my phone. Debt service has 39 thou, oops, I'm sorry. Debt service has $649,102.91. The general fund that's a community, still a community bank, has $19,702.3. American Rescue Fund Art Money has $260,566.66. Fire Escrow has $20,501.44. Refuge Account has $374,709.43. The general fund has $511,490.73. The Grant Fund has $50,274.55. The Healthcare Fund has $5,342.19. Line Usage has, oops, where's that? $639,447.27. Liquid Fuels has $259,126.91. Parks has $36,806.42. And forgive me, I got to find the other one. Give me a second. Where did it go? Here it is. Payroll has $7,585.70. And 46 cents. The Rec Board has $2,096.84. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lois Thomas, would you like to give us your streets and parks?
Good evening, everyone. Starting with the streets report followed by the library and just a note on our cleanup. Our Streets Department report from March 2023, collected downtown garbage twice a week, cold patched several streets, answered 30 PA1 calls, installed and straightened signs throughout the city, fixed a sinkhole in the redevelopment lot, removed fallen trees from the high winds, cleaned out several catch basins and changed oil and filters and attractors in order to prepare for the upcoming grass cutting season. Also helped the Parks Department as needed. Just wanted to let you know that we are going through with the cleanup day for the city on Saturday, this Saturday, April 29th from 9 to 1, along with the electronics drop off at the city garage on Purdy Boulevard. Your gloves, your vest, your bags will be provided. We will be meeting at Knight Street Park to, for you to distribute your supplies. The Salvation Army will be providing continental breakfast and lunch after the cleanup with pizza. And if you have any extra brooms, dustpans, weed whackers, lawn mowers you want to bring with you, please do so. We're going to try to do as much as we can within that a lot of time. You can stay later if you want. Excuse me? We probably could, unless, because normally what we do is the Streets Department will go around and pick. We probably could, unless, because normally what we do is, um, the Streets Department will go around and pick up bags throughout. And so, really, you know, they could put it and dump, but what they do is, we just put them on in a corner where it's not going to bother anybody walking on sidewalks. And then on Monday, they go and they pick up all the bags in their trucks, so. Um, if you wanted to, um, you may want to, because when we, if we're cutting back weeds and, and small trees, then that'll be better than just leaving it on the side of the road or on the street, so. This is our end date. Well, we're hoping, but there's hoping it's stopping by eight, so we got to go, go on with it anyway. Talked to Rodney, he says let's give it a shot and go with it. You know, the thing is, this is just our first cleanup day. Um, groups of us will continue throughout the summer. Just because it's our community day doesn't mean you stop in one day. You can't possibly clean up the city in one day. This is just a start. So in your own neighborhood, in your own, in your own city where you, in your part where you live, start there. And then branch off to the next block if you can. And then if you can't do it this weekend, do it a weekend where you can grab a couple people and do it. The more people involved throughout the year, it helps to keep our city looking a lot better. It's not just once, once a, once a year, once a summer. This is a continual thing that needs to be done throughout the year, okay? You know, and it helps if we can get our young people involved, because if they start now learning what to do to keep your city looking nice, you know, by the time they get up, that's a habit that you've already done. They've, they've obtained that habit, and they pitch in and do it whenever they can. But we need the help of everyone to do it. You can't just have three, or four, or five, or ten people doing it. We need everyone in Menneson to take part in it. But just a little bit about the Library. For the March, March, um, report up to April to this date, they have a people count of three thousand eighty-nine who came through the library. The Friends of the Library spaghetti dinner tickets are available at the library. The tickets are fourteen dollars for Alicia's Restaurant. The tickets will be used any day in the month of May, except for Mother's Day, okay? And they are continuing their search for the Children's Coordinator. The job opening has been posted. Um, you can, um, remember to just check the Library Facebook page and the website for program information. And they also maintain an active Twitter and Instagram account. But those are my reports, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman John Nestor, would you like to give us your report, please?
Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Members of council, administrative staff, uh, real office, and citizens in Menneson, here's the following reports for the Public Safety Department. Police Department receipts for the month of March twenty twenty-three miscellaneous collection, which was registration seventy-two dollars and fifty cents, which concludes the miscellaneous collection of seventy-two dollars and fifty cents. Court receipts from District Justice Office is the following. Vehicle code fines collected nine hundred and seventy dollars and thirty-one cents. Crime code fines collected six hundred forty-one dollars and nine cents. City ordinance collected a hundred and four dollars and seventy-two cents. Code enforcement collected a hundred dollars. Total receipts from the District Justice Office one thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars and twelve cents. Total receipts collected for March twenty twenty-three one thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents. Total citations given out for March twenty twenty-three one hundred and thirty-six, year-to-date three hundred and twelve. Following is the code activity report for March twenty twenty-three. Habitation permits seventeen. Correction letter sent out eighteen. Animal complaints seven. Miscellaneous complaints twenty-two. Building permits two. Meetings at the office with residents six. Citations issued four. Hearings five. Zoning permits four. The following will be the Menneson Municipal Fire Chief Report for March twenty twenty-three. Vehicle, uh, accidents three. Carbon monoxide leaks two. Structure fires three. Treat, uh, downs calls four. Wire down calls two. Natural gas leaks four. Animal rescue one. Medical assistance two. Automatic fire alarms two. Brush fires one. Public service one. Roof blown off one. Electrical fires one. Call, uh, calls outside the city, structural fires for Shawlory two. Structure fires for Washington Township one. Structure fires for Carroll Township one. Automatic fire alarm for Ross Draver one. Total calls thirty-two. Total fire fires three hundred and ninety-eight. Fire fires per call twelve point forty-three. Total man hours four seventy-eight. The following is the Mon Valley Emergency Medical Service Report for March twenty twenty-three. Emergency calls one twenty-four. Fires standbys twelve. Public service six. Uh, refers A, total incidents one forty-two. Uh, before I conclude, Mayor, I just wanted to touch bases to just getting, um, a lot of calls from the county demolition sites that, um, I don't know how long they have allotted before they can come up and clean up sites, but we have a lot of folks that live around the Ninth Street areas and those corridors of complaining that they still have dirt on their sidewalks. Um, the road's been chewed up from one of the, uh, vehicles that we're, uh, maintaining and tearing down the corner a lot there around Ninth Street. Um, I'll touch bases with Marvin, but I just don't want to burn any bridges, but I just want to make sure that, I, I mean, what is the timeframe that you have? Because some, some, some sites are getting cleaned, like, within ten days, and other sites are, like, forty-five days. And a lot of the houses are forty-five, or, or places where people actually live by. So I just kind of wanted to make sure that I get a, a sense of a number, so we have an urgency and not, uh, you know, to those citizens. I feel bad that I can't give them that information, because quite honestly, I don't know it.
I think that from the time that they receive the authorization to proceed, to the time that they're done, is forty-five days. That's across all the houses that they're responsible for.
Okay. So I'm just assuming it's just depending on the contractor itself and how swift or dire that, you know, or how much, you know, their millage are taking out or whatever, in that general, general area. Um, other than that, just that's a main concern that I have. Um, but other than that, Mayor, I do, you deal, yield the floor, and I thank you, everybody, appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilman Gregor, would you like to give us your report?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Um, Parks Department report for March twenty twenty-three. Cleaned the Civic Center, picked up litter, cleaned up the trees that the Shad, Shade Tree Commission wanted cut down. Uh, mechanic changed oil, filters, and blades on the park tractors for the upcoming grass cutting season, and preparing to get the water turned on for all the park facilities for games and events, and help the street departments as needed. Um, that concludes my report on that. However, I'd like to talk about Shawnee Park. Um, they've cleaned it up fairly well. Yeah, I was up there today checking up on what they had done. Um, they have started, uh, they've got the gravel leveled out. They got a lot of the pipe and everything cleaned up off the site. They actually repaired the fence. What does need to be done is, there's a curb that needs to be replaced on Shawnee Avenue, because the water's coming down the street, and it's washing off the road, and it's going to tuck, carry that gravel down into that ball field again. So they need to get that fixed as soon as possible. Mike, if you could check in on that? Uh, I get, I think that would be John, Cost, John Costa Grande?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, that needs to be taken care of. Also, I was talking to Mrs. Telegraphus about the batting cage. I, I can find batting cages, I just can't find anybody that wants to put them up. I had chatted with her for a few moments today, and she said that if we purchased a batting cage, that her and some of the other parents would put it up. I need to know, Joe, um, do they need to sign a release or something if we give them the authorization to do that? Because we could, we could probably save the city about three thousand to four thousand dollars.
Yeah, if that's what the city wants to do, you do have a, an insurance policy covering that area. But we could have them sign a release or volunteer.
All right, I'm going to talk to Mrs. Telegraphus, and if that's the route they want to go, because this has been going on for a while now. Uh, also on the other project, I've been looking into the tennis courts. It's like beating my head off the wall to get a contractor to come down and give me a quote. They take a look at it, and then I, it's the last I hear of them. So I'm, I'm not, haven't given up on it, but, uh, it's frustrating. It's extremely frustrating. That's it for me.
There's a couple of things that you might want to think about. I got a phone call from, uh, Mayor Potashium, former Mayor Potashium. He had been talking to Frank Rapsky. I don't know exactly sure I know who that is.
I don't either.
But what he said was that they thought that they could raise five thousand dollars in donations pretty easily, uh, for baseball fields, and that the Pirates had another five thousand dollar grant that they could provide for baseball fields.
Could you have, Mr. Potashium, give me a phone call?
I definitely will.
Aye, thank you. We'll get this done.
He also mentioned that, uh, bocce is becoming a fast rate-raising sport. I have no idea what that is, but it requires a different kind of field altogether, and I don't know where we'd put it, but it's just something that he thought about.
Epiphany of our Lord, if you want to see what one looks like.
Exactly, that's what he said to me.
Has one up there. It's kind of like bowling.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Does council have anything else they'd like to discuss?
Thank you for everything, Mayor, appreciate it.
At this time, I'd like to open the floor to public comment on, whatever you like.
Linda Lacy, sixteen twenty-four Maple Avenue. I just have a couple of questions. Um, and I'm going off of the information that I just got from our Fire Chief, Mr. Hippel. Whose authority were those two houses torn down on Fourteenth Street?
The counties.
But you just said that...
The county reached out to the residents, but the county is the ones that have the authority of that.
Okay, but that's a street in Menneson. Why wasn't everybody notified of that decision? Because there really wasn't anything wrong with those houses.
The county, well, first off, those, those houses owed lots of back taxes. They were acquired through the judicial system.
But yeah, I thought that's what you wanted to do. I thought that's what you were going to forgive the back taxes if somebody wanted to buy it.
The judicial system took that property, they moved it in the land bank, and they did their thing. They did take the, 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 uh, position that they called the neighbors in the neighborhood and asked them what they...
Nobody called me, and I live on Maple, which goes across that street.
Or at least a block away.
So I still got to come out there, and that house is right on the corner of Maple.
That one that was on the corner was definitely a problem, too. It was not as nice as what everybody was saying. The one in the middle might have been, but...
No, so now Evelyn has, she's sitting in the middle of two empty lots?
Yes.
Are those lots up for sale?
Through the land bank, yes.
Through the land bank?
Yes.
Okay, and then I just got one other question. Tony, is your phone connected to the city of Menneson? It's, is your phone a city of Menneson telephone? Okay, but, so why is our city finances on your personal phone?
My email account is. How am I supposed to do business?
Well...
Is there a problem with this?
Well, I just want to know why our city finances are on your personal phone. If you're going to use it for city business, why don't the city pay for your phone?
I don't need them to pay for my phone.
Well, why is your...
We all have email accounts.
And they're on your personal phone?
Mine, because I can't speak for everybody else, but I can speak for mine.
That's it.
Little simple, my name's Pino, you can hear me, right? One five oh six two. I want to ask you a question, the same question that I asked the redevelopment authority the last meeting. Mayor, you didn't answer. Is there repercussion from the people that bought that building, that ground, to the city of Menneson or the redevelopment authority? And I know the chairman of the redevelopment authority said you were on the board at the time, whenever they sold that piece of property to the people they own, a luminant source.
Right.
I mean, is there any, my question is the same as I did last...
I know of no liability that the city incurred through that.
Yeah, that's what the, you, you said nothing. That's what the attorney said.
Right.
But there's always another attorney that thinks differently. So if they were, if they were sold the property, my question was this. If they were sold the property to them under the pretense that they could put garbage in it...
They were not.
That's what they were going to do. And they bought it, and now they can't. Is the city...
First off, they were, they were told point-blank before they did this, that there was zoning requirements on that piece of property. They had to abide by the, the zoning. One has to think about this for just a little bit. He bought a piece of property that is owned residential on part and conservatively on the rest. He's been putting a road up there to get this going. Is there any chance that he's thinking about developing that land? Has anybody thought about that? Is there any chance that he's trying to subdivide that land, to, to sell it to the County Housing Authority or some other place? Nobody talks about those things. They are, they're accusing him of using something on the road to, to build the road up there, but why is he doing that? He has to follow the zone. He has to do what the zoning says. The zoning is residential and conservatory. He's not an idiot. He's a very smart man. He knows exactly what the zone was.
He's dealing with idiots.
Well, maybe, but he's, he, he, he basically knew what the zone was when he bought the property. He obviously has some ideas of how he can make money off of it, and that's what he's trying to do. Why is that hard for anybody to understand?
I don't have a problem with what he's doing. I'm having a problem understanding what you people are doing.
We told him exactly what the problem was when he bought the land. We told him that the zoning ordinance was being redone. If he needed it changed, he could submit it at that time, or he could do it later. He's, they made no attempt to change the zoning. None whatsoever.
My other question would be to you, did you find out anything about the, uh, parking garage?
I haven't heard anything back of the parking garage.
I mean, did you talk to anybody about it?
No, because that, right now, that wasn't, we're so busy trying to get all this redevelopment done. We've got like four or five different projects going right now, between the sewer projects, the parks, there's just too much going on right now. That's something that, I know we talked about, but right now, we're trying to get all this out the way. Just so much going on at right, one time, you know?
So one of the things that has actually occurred is, we were contacted by a company out of Stockdale that wants to use that for his business. He wants to fix it and do something. I don't know any details about it, or any ideas about it. I asked Marvin to talk to him, find out about what it is. He's supposed to provide some drawings, and Marvin can tell us whether it meets code and what is, what he's trying to do.
So you haven't filed a, you haven't helped the park?
No, I haven't.
Or you're going to any time soon?
Right, like I said, right now, Pino, five projects going right now. I'm trying to get those, my projects done first. There's just too, to add another big project like that, it's just too much at one time.
Could I ask you a question, Mayor? You say someone wants the parking garage?
Mm-hmm.
And he's going to convert it into something, and Marvin's looking into the details?
Exactly.
Okay, um, any kind of timeframe on that?
No, I, I know nothing about it other than what I just said.
Okay, um, so if they're going to do something, we would have to probably get K Two involved to make sure.
We'd have to do all kinds of things.
All kind of hoops to jump there, so.
Absolutely.
Well, that would be wonderful if that actually came to fruition.
We need to keep that for a parking facility if we're going to use at least five parking spaces down by the...
It, it would be great to keep it as a parking facility.
You just basically want him, that person, to give an estimate, right?
That's all, I mean, to me...
So you just want that person to just give an estimate?
Well, the, the, I guess the, the answer would be very simple. Either it can be fit for X amount of dollars, or it cannot be fit. But you just can't put enclosed and say, well, isn't, you know, is, we can't use it because it's dangerous. Uh, I mean, it takes more than any one person to say that.
Uh, engineers, engineering is who we require like that.
And we'll have, it's basically, hopefully, they'll do it without a charge to the city.
I don't think this whole country worked without cash. So they, they probably won't pay.
I don't find out how much you would charge them.
But that's the way you get it done, right? Freebies are not, you know, they don't work out too well. And the other part is, you know, I, I have a hard time understanding. And I guess I'm, maybe because I've only been in this country for sixty-some years, and still learning. You know, still learning. Why did the code enforcement gets involved on anything? And you have a redevelopment authority who's supposed to be involved? Now you got, tonight I learned, you have two ex-mayor who's on, on the board, and you brought another dud in to help you. That's pretty stupid. So you got three ex-mayor working for you. You know, and that's something you need to consider, because that's what they have. Three, four mayors not involved in Menneson, and they're like... They're like, to me, they're like dead song boys.
Okay.
I have a couple of things, my name is Chris, can everybody hear me? I've got a big mouth, shouldn't be a problem. All right, one thing is Oneida. When it's coming down onto Schumaker, you come down on there, that very last block there, it's a blind. You come out and you have to have the whole front end of your car out to be able to see, which means, especially when it's slippery, people go to stop and slide right now. I can't tell you how many times I've almost been sideswiped by a car.
Where is this?
Oneida, coming down onto Schumaker.
Okay, yeah.
Schumaker, however you say it.
I know what you're mentioning because I live on five Schumaker, I'm actually next to the old BNS bar.
Okay, so you know exactly.
So when you come up Oneida and you, you're coming up Oneida to go onto Schumaker, coming from Donner.
Yeah, you're coming down the hill, yeah.
Or the opposite way is just the worst, you know, when you're coming up, it's, it's just that intersection is just terrible and it needs to be ramped, revamped, but it's just...
Well, I was wondering if it was at all possible that that could be a, that, just that block could be a one-way up only, that way you don't have anyone sliding their car down there.
In the past, and unfortunately it got shut down by PennDOT, but in the past, what we were talking about, if you were coming down Oneida from, let's say, McKee, that would be going down, but going up would only be from, or that would be going down and up still, but going from Donner to Schumaker, that intersection, that little block right there where the old BNS bars blocking would just be a one-way going down onto Schumaker to Donner.
Well, I'm not talking about the Donner to Schumaker, I'm talking Schumaker up, that first block going up because that's where they come out.
The foundation wall right there, the blind spot.
Yeah, you can't see a thing.
Unfortunately, with the house being there, you're not, you can't move the foundation wall without destroying the interior.
All right, which is why I'm saying, how about let's just make it that one block, just up only. You can turn up it and everyone can park going up and turn up the house.
Come down Second Street or what?
Let's talk about snow. Let's talk about when we don't have enough manpower at night to maintain that street of Oneida and, but you want everyone to go up it, it's, you're, you're talking about going against gravity.
But at, right now, they can go up or down it and when they come down and they hit the snow, they slide right out in the middle of the cars.
It's a dangerous street, I completely agree with you and I feel your empathy, but I mean, I don't know what to tell you besides with that intersection, I mean, it's been challenging.
So if you, if you go up Oneida, what would you come down on?
That, just that one block would be a one-way street.
Okay, so what would you come down on that one block?
Well, at that point, you can go to the right, there is another street that goes off to the right.
And then you come down Third Street or, well, not Third, Second Street or First Street?
First Street or Sixth.
That's First Street, you have it.
Yeah, both of those have got similar type problems, you come down the hill, you're...
Well, they're steep, but they're not blind.
And actually, that's another issue too.
You don't have to be literally your entire front end of your car out to be able to see if you can even go out onto the road.
If you're coming from Schumaker up Oneida and let's say she's taking, she's mentioning taking a right, which is the first street of McKee, there's cars, cars still, till this day right now, that still park that say, do not park between this sign and that sign, which then hinders the driver to actually make a right or a left.
You have that everywhere.
Yeah, it's just a terrible intersection, yes, the chief, it's just, Chief Uhas, that's a pretty bad road itself in general, isn't it? I mean, it's...
Yeah, in general, it is.
Because if you're in the right lane...
You're making a left on McKee if you're coming down, because you're not, you know what I'm talking about, if you're coming down on Oneida and you don't go down to the lower parts, the next above street is McKee, Reed, Reed, you would be making a left on Reed, right?
That's where you're from, is that?
Yeah, if you're coming down.
Yeah, she wants to go.
If you're coming down, yes, yeah, because you're not going to be able to go down that further block, so you would be making a left on Reed, right?
I mean, even when you have fire trucks to go there, it's a narrow rim.
Just there's a few houses there, you can, you know, just on that one block, that would be a one-way on Lane.
You would just make a left before you get to that lower block.
And that way, at least you don't have to worry about a car sliding, because if you're in that right lane and they come sliding out, it's not like you can jump into the next lane to get out of the way. I can't tell you how many times I've always got sideswiped or clipped in the back.
I know, I hate going on that road for that very reason, there's, I understand your...
I had somebody tell me instructions one time before I lived here to go down that road and dear God, I get down to the bottom and I'm like, I'm going to die, yeah, so it's just not a good situation.
It's not, it's not good.
It's not.
That'd be worth a, put, put the PennDOT once again.
Put in a red light there like I did at First Street, then you got the problem solved, everybody has to stop.
No, that might be the...
But it's the question of can you stop? When it's icy, you're not stopping.
I used to live there, I know.
My question is if it's icy going down, it's going to go icy.
First is bad too. Okay, well, something needs to be done before someone gets killed, okay? The second problem I have is there is a lot right next to the property on six-six-five Knox and the people that live in six-six-five Knox have been dumping just garbage in that lot for over a year now. I have come down here over twenty times trying to get something done.
Who have you talked to?
Um, well, I've talked, is it Marlene, sorry, Marlene? Yeah, I've talked to her dozens and dozens of times and I've actually talked to Marvin now that he's been hired and I used to talk to John Harhi about it. I, I mean, I've just been down here, it first started, they started remodeling and they're dumping a toilet out there, then it was drywall. He literally, you could see the Wirborow marks coming from his back door, the whole way down through his yard, he rolled the fence back so he could put down a piece of plywood and very conveniently dumped the crap into the yard. It is now taller than me high. I've called the police, the police came down, said they didn't see it. How, you missed something that's taller than me high? I'm, I'm wondering why he should be driving a truck, a car if he can't see something like that, but I don't know the police officer's name nor do I care. All I want is it cleaned up. It's all I want, I want it cleaned up. And technically, that is a paper alley there, so the big old mound of crap that's there is technically on your guys' property. I mean, it is technically a paper alley between the property and the, you know, the property line and the next property line and it's all there. It's been going on for over a year, I've taken hundreds of pictures, I can show them to you, they're lovely.
Why don't you help us, why don't you join us on Saturday and we'll go over there and we'll figure out a way to clean it all up? Maybe we can get a dump truck to help us.
I don't want to clean it up though.
But it's going to have to be a community effort that we, we're going to have to reach out and do something.
The man needs to be stopped.
The man, right, yeah, there needs to be a fine issue. He's got to pay for the dumpster, he needs to clean it up. I'll stand there and...
I'm not going to deny that, but how do you, how do you prove that that's him?
Well, the pictures are starters.
Okay, well, see if the police can pursue.
You need to go file a complaint with the police department.
But that's just it, if the city does not want to go after him, that's fine, then you guys need to pay to clean it up because it's, it's been going on for over a year, you know? I hated to have to come down here and publicly shame it just to get it done because, I mean, I've tried to do it, you know, hey, can you send a letter? You know, John Harhi said he'd sent like three or four letters, she said she sent three or four letters, nothing's being done about it and I do not for the life of me understand why, so...
You say you have, you have video evidence of this?
I don't have video, I have pictures.
You have pictures of him doing it?
I don't have pictures of him, no. I have pictures of, you can see where he rolled his own fence back and you can, you can see downward.
You need to talk to the police department, see if they, you have enough evidence.
I did and they came down and said, they didn't see the mound.
Go talk to the chief.
So I don't know, I just want it cleaned up. I don't care who does it at this point, I just want it cleaned up. So, and let's see, what's else? Oh, sinkhole, there is a sinkhole in the middle of the last block of Reed, the six-hundred block of Reed, it's just opening up in the middle of the road, was hoping that could get fixed sometime.
It's coming off, I think, who's, there's someone else that's going to, the guy, Brandon, who's doing that?
They're replacing the water pipe.
Rodney says they're coming over when they're done, they're going to take care of the, the sinkhole, I don't even, but they have it toned off.
Because it's getting bigger and deeper.
Right, they have it toned off, that's supposed to be taken care of.
Because there's a guy that parks right there, he's got that great big van, it's going to go right in there, yeah. So, yeah, there's that and the last thing is, there are, there are all these lots, you said they're in a, a land bank?
There is land bank, yes.
Yes, there is one lot in particular, I have called and left it with you at least five messages now, detailed messages saying, hi, this is who I am, I want to buy this lot, this is the address, and you've never called me back.
I tried to. I don't know, I can't really explain why I didn't because I really tried to return all the phone calls.
But I would really like to buy this lot. I don't know what I'm going to do to like...
Well, we need to find out who, is it in fact owned by the land bank?
Yes, it is.
Then, the land bank has a policy that they will sell property to adjacent property owners.
It is adjacent to my property.
Then there should be no reason why you couldn't get that.
Okay, I agree.
There's an application that we have upstairs, come by and get it, I will, you can fill it out, send it in to them and they will do it, five hundred bucks.
That's wonderful, that's all I needed. And that is everything.
Thank you for your time.
George Joseph, Eighth and South.
Come on up here.
I'm loud enough for everybody.
Well...
I heard two people say tonight about how you folks pay West Penn for streetlights. Did I not hear Rosely say, figure, and didn't I hear this gentleman here mention a figure? What do we pay West Penn for streetlights?
Depends on the location.
Do you pay monthly?
Yes.
Uh, well, I live at Eight Loos, corner of Loos and Somerset, my streetlight's been out for five weeks.
Have you reported it to, to, to West Penn?
Four times. I talked to this young lady here and she gave the information to Marvin and Marvin called and probably talked to the same person I talked to. So my point is, I went from the fire station, Hilltop Fire Station, down to Linda and I got sixteen streetlights out, just in a ten-block area, if it's a ten-block area. Now, if, I suggest you folks on council...
I'll tell you what, if you'll give me that list of streetlights that are out, I will call our government agent, our government representative at West Penn and I will give them that list and say, we will not pay for these streetlights until they are fixed.
Well, that's my point, if you folks would take this weekend and take one hour and go through the city and mark down all the streetlights out because it's unsafe. And he even mentioned here that people don't want to move into an area that's unsafe and with the streetlights out, it is a safety issue.
Well, I would, would ask residents to give me their list of properties, I will get ahold of them, a list of lights that are out.
These ones I'm keeping because next up is the news media.
Is it okay if I take a picture of that, please?
Where is it, the rocks? Let me just, the rocks.
But it's not just the lights on your street, it's not just those, we've had, we've given this other places to, to Marvin and he's contacted West Penn because they, because the people have gotten the codes off the, off the poles where the lights are, it's just West Penn's taking forever to get to them. Their list is even longer than that.
That's what I'm saying, if each one of yous would take somebody and ride in just where you live and marked on the poles that the lights are out, I would quit paying West Penn for the lights that aren't working. You pay for services rendered, do you pay for services that aren't rendered?
Apparently so.
I mean, come on.
I think he has a list longer than that already and it's just a matter of waiting on West Penn, but I really don't pay them.
Five weeks I've called and, and it ain't happened and they tell you get a pole number? Well, I'm not, I'm going to look for no pole number, but I give them street address.
It's down, it's, you don't have to climb the pole.
No, I'm not.
Yeah, but it's, I bet you we have that list longer than that already, it's just a matter of them getting out to you, but don't pay them.
There's probably a hundred fifty lights on in the city and I don't know why you're paying a monthly fee and not getting service.
I will make a phone call tomorrow to find out exactly what's going on.